I'd like to call a order in the October meeting for the planning and zoning board. Seth, can we please have a roll call for attendance?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Don Black?
Here.
Travis Oakley?
Here.
Raymond Layton?
Here.
Raymond Shout?
Here.
Marcia Dunn?
Here.
Marcus?
Here.
Pat Dory?
Here.
Sonia Ludo?
Here.
Perfect attendance. Now, of course.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to welcome everybody to the meeting. The first item on the agenda after the roll call is the approval of the minutes of September 7th of 2021 meeting. I haven't gone through it, I just received them. Does anybody have any evidence that the candidates will review the minutes at all? No?
You may need to, I read them. Just an infestation now.
Does anybody wish to make any amendment to them?
I'd like to make a motion, we approve the man's presentation.
We have a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
A motion for the second. Seth, roll call, please, on the approval of item number two?
Don Black?
Yay.
Travis Oakley?
Yes.
Raymond Layton?
Yes.
Marcia Dunn?
Yes.
Marcia Dunn?
Yes.
Marcus Simmons?
Yes.
Pat Dory?
Yes.
Sonia Ludo?
Yes.
Question asked.
On new business, we have the, um... Oh, no, old business, excuse me, was discussion of the proposed change to the land use ordinance, and I believe everybody has gotten a copy. Would the staff like to give us a review of the ordinance and the reasons why, please?
I will, yeah. Well, we met a couple weeks ago now to go over to section 214A5, talking about the 150 lots providing, requiring a second point of access. So, most of the discussion really centered along the language that would allow deviations from that, considering some properties may not have the required frontage. So, the language is presented to you, which is pretty much the standard disclaimer, that says if you can't meet the rules, then the Director of Development Services makes that a determination or just designate. And I'm not sure if, it was a long meeting, it was a productive meeting, and I cleaned my office out last Friday and misplaced my notes from that meeting.
Well, it was a good meeting.
It was a great meeting. So, if I'm missing any details, we can talk about them now. I didn't miss anything big, but I know we had a lot of discussion, and if I missed something, then make sure that we get that out now so I can make those changes and formulate the letter to the Board of Alderman if you also choose to move forward with it.
Okay. Now, there were also changes, I don't see any here, there were basically stylistic changes, where sometimes we used the number, the character of the law, and other times we spelled it out. I don't think you included this in the force right now. I know Raymond was looking at...
What was that was, uh?
Well, I think that...
So, if the sections that were sent with our packets, so it has more than 214, but the 214 that was included in that indicates all of those, what I'll call housekeeping changes from, you know, written 24 to the numeral 24. And I, so that was going to be my next question also, Mr. Chair, is are we also proposing to, in addition to the 15, 214 subsection 5, is asking the Board of Alderman to take that up and review it? Or we also going to include the entirety of the changes proposed for section 15, 214? One of which in subsection 4 was changing from 1,000 feet on the dead-end street to 750, and adding the, as determined by the Director of Development Services or their designate, and then just that, those housekeeping items I just mentioned. That would be my preference.
Okay. Now, as our council president, have you reviewed the changes to the land use ordinance, and do you have any issues that we should know about?
I have been able to review section 15, 214, subsection 5. Unfortunately, I was not involved in the working group meetings, I'm not, I don't have the benefit of all of that information. I do have just one suggestion. Whenever we are constructing new laws, we want to make sure we have objective standards. And the underlying portion here on, in section 5, notwithstanding the provision of the subsection, the second point of access may deviate from the minimum standard. I'd like to know what deviate means. Does that mean that we're going to...
Be less than 500 feet, that's the way I read it.
Okay.
And so, the reasoning for that, if I may, is site planning being as it is, it's a pretty organic thing. The frontage of a particular property that is being developed might not allow for that separation. And so, what we, we still like to have the two exits if we're greater than 150 lots, but what this language does is it allows staff to have input on that. If they can't meet the 500, it gives staff the ability to have input on that, to still get the two, which we all feel is important.
And I think I understand that. The consideration that I would raise is there are general prohibitions in the law of granting unfettered discretion to SAD people. So, someone potentially could read that language and say, okay, they're delegating authority to the Directors of Development Services to waive or reduce this requirement based on what standards we don't know. Our best minds would say they would consider the site plan, consider the geographic features, and make a common sense determination, but how do you make sure that's consistent across the board as it's applied to every property?
Sure.
I don't know based on this language.
Do you have any suggestion to correct that?
You know...
I mean, we do not want to discourage the development of a large parcel of land because of the thing we would, especially with the housing shortage that we have in New Bern presently.
Absolutely.
I got, I think, if I may, the safeguard there is that it still comes before this board. And so, in my thinking, this only gives the applicant and staff the ability to put together, to assist the applicant in preparing their site planning to meet the intent of the ordinance so that it can come before this board for discussion and ultimate, you know, review and approval or disapproval.
And I just think that applying the rules based on legislative intent, you know, 60 days from now, it's very clear.
Sure.
Six years from now, maybe not so much. And to your question, Mr. Chair, and thank you for giving me an opportunity to weigh in, I, it's very difficult to try to craft a rule that is rigid enough, rigid enough to be objective, but flexible enough to...
Allow for accommodation.
Under these circumstances. In this moment, I'm not prepared to give you any suggestions. In my consultation with Mr. Davis, who did a great deal of work on crafting the land use ordinance as it exists today, I think part of the reason why this wasn't specifically addressed is because trying to strike that balance is very difficult. I've not seen similar examples across the state in communities of our size. Unfortunately, I don't, I don't have any amendment that I can propose.
Excellent. And follow by that. So, I guess from my point of view, and certainly not speaking for the board at large, but just thinking through this and understanding site planning as I do, we could easily strike the minimum separation language and just require two exits. I mean, that's pretty straightforward. The problem we've run into, we had that language, is that an developer then decides to put them side by side, which really doesn't accomplish the intent. And so, I suppose maybe we have a little more homework to do? I mean, I just wrote the natural, natural features or physical limitations of the site. You don't have it. You literally don't have 500 feet of frontage. Right. Or some other natural features. That's pretty much the same language that's in the cul-de-sac section, which I'm trying to find. Yeah. Which has already been approved. We have similar language in connectivity standards, which really does delegate that decision. Yeah, that's what I was looking at, connectivity. To, that delegates the decision to the Director of Development Services. That's in the code. But...
I have, Mr. Cor...
That's the only thing you can do. You either have some kind of natural feature, a lake, a wetland, a mountain, or physical limitations of the site. It's a triangle, and it's 400 by 400 by 400. But then if it's at an intersection, it's always larger subdivision, or at some level.
Well, it could, it could come out to a different street.
Absolutely, yeah, I mean, that's the impact. You don't want it on the same street for the most part, unless they're 500 feet apart.
My question is just for clarification. Is this for each individual submission? What I mean is, if I come in and I submit plans for 149 lots, I don't need one entrance? And then I come in next year and want to expand on that, but it's a separate submission, and it's another 149 lots, do I need to make another entrance?
We hope so.
Well, yes. Practically yes. Yes. Practically yes, but from the letter of the ordinance?
Yeah.
Maybe not.
Again, then maybe we should address that, because...
And we do have that in our general, in our general plan language. That's a, that's a situation that is pretty difficult to come by these days, because we request that if the developer does own a lot, you know, if they own 700 acres and they come in with 100 acres, we don't, we require them to come in with the entire. Right. And then they can phase out the approvals.
Correct.
Yeah. Of the individual pieces that they're looking to... That's a, maybe a situation that may have happened in the past, but it's almost impossible to happen. Right. I can't imagine... They've got to have the master plan. Got to have a, got to have a general plan. For sure. Yeah.
Jamie, I wish you could have heard part of our discussion, and two of the things that we are trying to make sure do not happen again. Do you remember about two months ago when there was a fatality wreck on Broad Creek Road going to Fairfield Harbor, and it literally bottled up Fairfield Harbor for several hours? That is the only way in and out of Fairfield Harbor. And another one is Travis, your subdivision?
Yeah, over there in Bell Oaks where I live at. Initially, when they built the first three or four phases, there was one way in, one way out. Well, now they're doing phase five, six, and seven, and wanted to add all these homes there's, because they weren't required to have two in, two entry and exit points now.
Actually, they had one, and the Board of Alderman had to take it out.
Well, yeah, so, I'll give you a quick history. So, initially, when they, when they did the first four phases, they had an idea to put in another road, they had built another single road, put houses on there, that was going to be the second entry point. Well, once those folks bought those homes, they then went to the Board of Alderman, years back, before any of us were on board, went to that Alderman in Ward 6, whoever it was at the time, and said, hey, we want this road blocked off so no one can drive in and out, it's not an exit point for the larger neighborhood behind us, which is where I live. So, he got that blocked, even though that developer bought that land and then, and put those houses on there, it got blocked, so now it can't be unblocked. So, now, in order for them to build again, which they're in the process of doing, there's one entry point and exit point. During Florence, that road actually washed out to where we could not get out of the neighborhood. So, if you tack on and put another 200 homes in there, now you've got 200 more people that can't get out because it's a single, single failure point.
And I appreciate that, those two examples. My question, and I'm not intimately familiar with the Bellows' subdivisions, so hopefully you can help me. With those additional phases, is it possible to have a second point of entry now?
No. Nope. Yeah, and so that's the physical limitations part that Jeff was talking about, that, you know, that might be some valuable language for this, what we're talking about.
I'm kind of thinking maybe it's not worthwhile, because what happens with this language as it is, it provides more opportunity for the developer. So, we're forcing two different entrances based on the separation. Jeff, and as you suggested, the planning board has final review on that, so the only thing, it's really an accommodation to allow for larger developments. It's, it'd be a win-win, and I can't see any legal action being taken by the developer against the city of River for not allowing a development. I mean, what's the sense of that?
Can you restate your question? I'm not sure if I...
Well, you, you say the enforcement of the discretion of the, of Development Services, Director of Development Services, or the approval of the Planning and Zoning Board. If we allowed an accommodation for the developer to produce 151 lots, that otherwise would not be through the developer's discretion, why would the developer want to bring legal action against us if we're trying to accommodate them?
Well, the only question that I raise isn't necessarily with the number of lots or the general spirit of this proposed piece of legislation. Here's what I propose. Here's the argument, if I put my defense lawyer hat back on, which I used to be, if I were representing a developer and I wanted to argue this, I'd say, okay, so, we don't have the ability, we don't have the frontage to do two entrances 500 feet apart.
Right.
We want to do two entrances 100 feet apart.
It's up to the discretion of...
So, we go to the Director of Development Services, whoever that individual happens to be, and the director says, no, 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 you're going to do it 400 feet apart, or you can't build. Okay, that's one circumstance. And then another developer comes in 10 years later with a different Director of Development Services and says, hey, same scenario, I don't have 500 feet of frontage, I want to do two entrances 100 feet apart. And that director says, yes. Wait a minute, the rule is being applied inconsistently, and future developer says, hey, this thing is all over the map, I didn't get what I wanted, you see all of these deviations in how the rule is being applied, I am being damaged, I'm being harmed because of the application of the rule. And what I'm proposing, and I'm not saying that that's a winning argument in front of a judge, but what I'm saying is it gives room for argument to say, what does deviate mean, to what level of discretion, and how can you make sure that by an objective standard, the rule is being applied fairly for all of those different factual scenarios? So, in fact, can you not take the word deviate out and use a more direct word? That would change the whole contents of that sentence? Potentially.
Jeffrey, what if you put the language that, in any event, it shall not be less than 100 feet apart or something like that?
What if they says separation equal to, not less than one-half the... Distance of the front. Distance of the longest parcel, parcel dimension or something, something like that. I mean, we do that in building code all the time. In buildings, for egress, our, if it's greater than 50 people, you have to have two means of egress out of the building. So, once you have to have two means of egress, those, two means of egress have to have a minimum separation distance. It's equal to, by code, half the diagonal dimension of the building. That's how you determine which minimum separation distance is. So, I mean, we could craft some language like that, that, that then, you know, it uses the parcel dimension to calculate what your separation distance is, rather than giving it a hard number like 1,000 feet, or 500 feet, or 200 feet, or something like that.
Which makes the standard more objective, yes.
And then we can have two entrances 11 feet apart. Well...
And that's my other...
You're right, if you've got, I mean, if your longest dimension is 22 feet, then there you go.
And that was the other issue I'm going to raise, I understand the issue that we're trying to defend, you know, flooding on a parcel and a road being washed out, but in parcels that are not tremendously large, or in circumstances where the two points of entrance are at the same, you know, elevation, do we solve a problem, or do we just create another administrative clause or something?
Sure.
I don't know, but that's something for you on it.
I don't think the current zoning, though, allows for like 150 units on a city plot, does it?
It does. Yeah, it does.
And so, what zoning it is?
Sure.
Are we only talking about single-family houses?
No, we're talking about home, you know, it's...
No, we're talking about lots.
Lots.
Yeah, lots, that's the language. Yeah, individual lots. So, in consideration of what Jamie has presented to us, good head scratching stuff, I think what I would like to consider, or what I'd like to propose, is that we not take up this issue and send it to the Board of Alderman yet. I think what I'd like to do is give staff and our work group another shot at it, with these considerations, and then bring it back before this board next month with some cleaned-up language for consideration, and maybe we can get it across our colleagues' desks over here beforehand. Does that seem reasonable?
Would you be willing to come to a work session?
Absolutely.
Absolutely, I serve, and I'm here to sit and ask...
And if we want to brainstorm on it in the meantime, and give us recommendations, that'd be helpful.
No pressure.
None at all, it's, Mr. Chair, I'm happy to accept that challenge.
I'm very happy to know. Actually, Anthony takes charge at this point, because he's in charge of the work group. Do you have anything to add?
No, I think we're headed in the right direction, and I appreciate the fact that you will be there, because that will give us guidance that we didn't have before, and coming up with something that we had not even thought of. So, that's helpful.
Well, I really think that this is an excellent first draft, because this is a difficult issue that has lots of nuance, and considering those complexities, I think you're thinking in the right direction.
Well, I certainly thank your input and your willingness, you are having to work with us on that matter.
Jeff, to that end, can you get Ms. Mayo to see if she can get us back together again, please, sir?
So, a general email will be going out to the... And just for everybody's application...
Ms. LaForte, please.
So, this being old business and not an application, there's no action required on our part, I don't think. I think it's just...
No, it's not a special...
So, let me just clarify, we're not willing to say if you can't have, if you can't have two exits, 500 feet apart, you can only have 149 lots. Could I be willing to say that?
Yeah.
That's right.
Yeah, I don't think I'm, well, speaking from, I don't think I'm willing to, you know, site planning being organic as it is, as I said, you know, that's a box that I'm not willing to draw.
I think it's too restrictive, and I think you're holding that answer to the developer too hard.
We can certainly develop some language that will be productive and will allow this to be, this article to be enforced fairly across the board.
Does anybody wish to make additional comments? Additional questions? So, I think we can now move on to, as we're not approving any, approving any documents right now, we can move on to the next item on the agenda, which is new business. A Corey Thomas is requesting to rezone approximately 24, 6 acres from R10 residential district to a C3 commercial district. The parcel is located at 4416 US 17 Highway South. Staff of you, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, as you said, Mr. Corey Thomas submitted an application for a rezoning request from R10 to C3. I don't know, US Highway 17 corridor, got an aerial photograph of the property now, where the property is fenced, partial small structure, but overall, the property is vacant. As you said, the property is presented to R10, you can see that it's a bit of C3, beginning adjacent to the east, and then a few lots away to the west. Let's go through the characteristics here. R10 residential district designed to accommodate single and two-family homes, 10,000-foot lots required for one-family dwellings and additional 5,000 foot required for each district. The R10, the R10 residential district promoting the general purposes of the ordinance, specific intent of the district is to encourage continued use of land for residential purposes, prohibit commercial industrial use of the land, and to prohibit any other use which would substantially interfere with the development of continued single and two-family dwellings in the district. Encourage discontinuance of existing use of it and not be permitted as new usage in the district. Discourage any use which would generate traffic on minor streets or other normal traffic to residences on the streets. Discourage any use which, given the characteristics of the requirements and cost of public services that place a fire protection ward or supervisor that is substantially in excess of set requirements and costs in the district for development purposes. For the proposed zoning of C3, this commercial district is established as a district for off-street purchase services and retailing of durable and convenience goods district. It can only be located on the city's major radial roads. Because this district will be located on high-volume traffic arteries, it will be subject to not only local residents, but currents of other non-local motors, ample off-street parking, controlled traffic movement, and appropriate communities, including usable, receivable planting shall be provided. So, we've already gone through this, but to the north, you've got R10, south to R10, to the E C3, and to the west, R10. The proposed, the proposal rezoning of subject property to C3 commercial district is consistent with the characteristic adjacent land use and vendor classification. That is bound to pose rezoning to be in the public interest and consistent with city land use and transportation plans. Keep the policy available, and moderately suited residential and located on the other 17 corridor. The staff has got no objection to the plus of the rezoning. But that's the rezoning.
Okay, so the staff recommends approval of this application?
That's the part.
Now, is the applicant present at all? Does he...
No, he's not present.
Okay. Okay. Any questions from members of this board as to this application? At this point, I'd like to hear a motion to approve. I think Jeff had a question.
Not a question, Mr. Chair, but just some background, we saw this parcel about a year ago, if you remember, that's all. Same request, Troy voted to approve it, and it was ultimately denied by the Board of Alderman. The applicant has met his statutory requirements to wait before he can resubmit, so he has done so again.
Was there objection, dear member?
We do have it, and we probably, and we should have shown you this, we have probably three other rezonings, two commercial breaks along this corridor from the past so many years, and we should have shown that. But, just some ac...
And we should have shown that, but just some background in case, if they look familiar or, you know, just wanna know what we're getting into again.
And Jeff, just from my own knowledge, the previous ones, were those approved?
Yes.
By the board of aldermen?
Yes.
Seventeen corridor. It's on the seventeen corridor. C three is, is the zoning that is recommended on the seventeen corridor. I don't see a problem, so I suspect that I voted to approve last time.
I mean, I can easily see where the other ones will do the same thing. I mean, if it's all commercial along there, you've got this one little section.
One other question, Jeff, not this pain, but it may. Do we know what they're trying to put in there? Is that what?
Well, you know, we're looking at, obviously, the staff answer is, we leave a view of range of uses that allow in a commercial three zoning district. The applicant has shared with me, I believe he has a roofing company and is looking actually to create a small little office, but mostly, I think, storage of his materials on site.
Which would conform to.
Yeah, he would have an office, yeah, absolutely.
On those materials, I would imagine would be hazardous at all, wouldn't it?
I don't know that, but, you know, if they are hazardous materials, there's a whole other process that's gotta be followed.
Seth, is there any way you could go back to the aerial photo?
What's that?
Nothing, there's a small twelve by twelve shed, I believe, started, but you can't have a shed without a primary use, it's considered accessory structure, you can't have an accessory structure without a primary structure.
Is that why they're used, is that a pad of some sort?
It's the same. Not just same, where he's.
Yeah, correct, yeah. I think there's a, is there a auto shop next to it or something? I forget, but.
This is the house, and then you've got a couple offices.
Okay, yeah, so you get a little further down and you start to get into some more commercial use.
Right.
Mr. Layton is correct, it's on US seventeen. The commercial corridor.
I don't, this is my personal opinion, I don't see why we wouldn't approve it and honestly, I don't know why it was, why the board of aldermen shut it down the first time. That's kind of contradictory to the whole reason to have zones and their specifications. And if we're gonna, if we're gonna pick and choose, especially on the seventeen corridor, you're getting into some, you're wading into some waters that you may not wanna wade into, so.
Well, if I may, Mr. Jay, I'd like to make a motion that we recommend approval of the rezoning of parcel eight dash two S six, that's year twenty-eight, from R ten residential district to C three commercial district.
We have a motion, the motion's second.
Second, that motion.
The motion's second. Seth, the roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Don Black?
Yeah.
Dan Burden?
Yes.
Dan Layton?
Yes.
Ian Chau?
Yes.
Tony Dunn?
Yes.
Marcus Simmons?
Yes.
Pat Doherty?
Yes.
Zaino?
Yeah.
Mr. Pat?
Very good. At this time, we can go to open comments and I have a couple questions out for Jeff. Jeff and I were discussing Old Air Force Road, and we understand there's progress to sell to Galiford and February in progress right now, can you inform the members of the board?
Oh, sure, so Jordan Hughes, the city engineer, has been actively working with landowners along the proposed waterline and has secured easements through some private properties to be able to install the waterline. And his last step is working with, I think, the North Carolina Trust, Land Trust, who has property that we need to get an easement, and so he's working through that process. Once that's complete, they have the project funded and ready to go, so it should be moving within the next, you know, six months or so, maybe a little longer, but it's, it's well on its way.
And once when they have the easements and get the project going, this is a project, the construction time shouldn't take that long.
No, not long at all.
That should help the situation as far as pressure on the water, for some?
Yeah, that's, that's our understanding.
Jeff, how many additional lots or homes will it serve before we start seeing the problem again?
I don't think we'll see the problem again.
Yeah.
That's fantastic.
Last, I understood was this would.
This was the last.
This would handle the build out.
Yep.
Is there going to be water power involved in this?
No, sir.
You know, that may handle the build out, but does that function to handle any other properties outside of that, outside of Bluewater Rise?
I think it's almost completely surrounded by national forest property.
Correct, yeah, there's, there's no other properties that we could, and the board has made a decision really not to jump over US seventeen to incorporate more properties and to annex more properties. So we have more of a fire service issue handled. So everything is pretty much either planned to be built or built south of the river. And all of that has been taken into account in all the water supply calculations. And when Jordan was here, you know, we got water until twenty sixty or something before we even could consider, I think, half capacity or something, it's crazy like that, so we don't have a water supply issue or water quality issue.
Yeah, that was more of a pipes up and distance problem.
Correct.
Now, some, some members of the fellow has been asking me, how is the new building permitting going? And is instructions, are they beginning to rise?
So, let's see here, we're in October, so we have just about a little more than double what we did all last year.
Oh, ready?
Yeah, so we're coming up on about four hundred single family apartments for the year. Which is a lot for.
And, and commercial?
We usually do, you know, last year we did, I think like two. I'm out, so, I think we did maybe like two seventy last year, so. We definitely surpassed what we did last year and we're approaching, we'll probably hit about double.
There's also been interest exposed in the developing, in West New Bern area.
Correct.
How does that, is that progressing?
Yes, I had a meeting with that group a couple weeks back, they are looking at putting in a charter school that we're working with, their developer and their owners, and also looking at a new section of residential. Another eighty lots or so.
Now, for myself, I'm always very interested in the redevelopment, so what kind of projects would be the easiest?
For the redevelopment area, let's see here, so tomorrow, the redevelopment commission was gifted a house at six oh two Gaston, that's located behind the black, old black swan building on the Gaston Boulevard, where the new Stanley Wyre Recreation Facility is going to be built. That house is being moved, starting to move tomorrow to nine eleven New Banks, where it will be rehabbed and then rented out to a low mod income family. The redevelopment commission is coming up on a very important closing date for, for about, I think, an acre total of property or so, maybe a little less than the redevelopment area. That will allow us to construct, at this point, probably between fifteen and twenty new units in the redevelopment area, so we're moving forward with the closing. And then working with our consultant to work on design schemes and costing for that. And junk vehicles has been a focus of the commission over the past year. We hired a new nuisance abatement minimal housing officer who's specifically dedicated to the redevelopment area, Dr. Gregory Holmes. He's done a fabulous job in two weeks and has removed twelve cars from the community in two weeks, where by in one year, I've removed two. So Greg's doing a much better job than me. So, you know, and with that, working on, you know, people cleaning up yards and junk like conditions and whatnot, but our focus is on the junk cars right now because it's almost a plague. And let me think here, community cleanup is coming November sixth.
Fifth and sixth.
November sixth, right?
Fifth and sixth.
Fifth and sixth, we have a new community cleanup in the, in the area. Storm, but great, October eighteenth. I'm just looking at the date here, eighteen. Pretty sure, eighteenth. We're having a public input meeting in this room to gather public input on the Duffy Field Stormwater Project, it's one of the first projects that we worked on as the redevelopment commission, utilizing the FEMA buyout lots that we have back there, numerous FEMA buyout lots that we couldn't do anything with, became a nuisance to the community with overgrowth, trash collection, and just relatively swampy land, obviously, because it was FEMA buyouts, they were repetitive lost properties from flooding. We've owned them for about fifteen years or so and have, didn't really know what to do with them. We approached FEMA with a plan to say, hey, if, if we, can we dig these things out and make them a retention pond, they said that's absolutely fine. We've hired an engineer to conceptually design it, found out that it actually can work. So we're moving forward with that project, it's approximately four and a half million dollar project. We are getting funding from various grant sources to complete the project, we've got about a million dollars of that already. You can see, if you head up to a Biddle Street, by West A Street, they'll see that they've started, they dug some holes, moved some dirt around for that. So that project, when it's completed, will extend from West A, essentially down along the cemetery, down towards, come on, what road is Pastor Holmes Church on?
Cypress.
Up down towards Cypress and head down towards like Haiti area, will be a really a brand new retention pond, but it's going to be both wet and dry retention, so it'll, a portion of it will always be wet, some of it will only be wet when it rains. The portion that's dry is gonna be planted with wetland type species, nitrogen fixing, phosphorus fixing plants to clean the water, that water will be collected, cleaned, pumped up to Biddle Street Pond, and then actually further up, I think, to Rose Street and pumped into the Jack Smith's Creek Wetland. Part of that project is also a linear park, so we're gonna have wood blocks, interpretive signage all along it to create a community amenity, more of a park-like setting, also serving stormwater retention. The project itself will treat the storm water from a twenty-five year storm, twenty-five year storm, which is essentially a little more than what our contemporary government restrictions are right now. So that'll hopefully alleviate a lot of the periodic flooding that we see in that area because it's very low, with just routine rain events, so it starts to dry it out, create a community amenity, hopefully increase some value in the community, get some investment, the redevelopment commission controls a lot of property up there on West A Street, actually at the top of the project, between Biddle and West A. If Jamie will let me tear down the houses there, we can get going on that project too. Another twenty-five units, brand new units that we can build there.
Jeff, what are you doing, the existing pond that's over, right at Biddle and the railroad tracks?
That's, that's.
It looks like the monster from the Black Lagoon could crawl out of it. And I wouldn't be surprised if it doesn't at night, it's awful. What are we doing to clean that water up and at least make it less?
Less bad.
Less hazardous for the neighborhood? I mean, if I was a six-year-old child, that would be an enticing place to go and a really bad place to do.
Sure. Well, that's, that's the nature of the project, so all the water that's collected down Duffy Field has no stormwater treatment, so everything that's collected in that pond runs off through the Duffy Field, gets collected in the Duffy Field Canal, goes into the Biddle Street Pond, gets pumped under the railroad tracks in the Jack Smith's Creek Wetland, which does an excellent job of filtering out the pollutants before it discharges into the news. So we're essentially taking the Biddle Street Pond and increasing the size tenfold. So instead of all that nitrogen collecting in one spot causing the creature of the Black Lagoon effect, that water that gets there will already have been treated through these wetland system that we're creating to make it a little cleaner before it gets pumped out.
That's right, but what are you doing right now? Is there anything you can do to clean the water a little bit? The neighbors are very upset about it and rightly so.
Sure, no, it's a construction project, so in a couple years it'll be done, but there's literally nothing that can be done at this point in time.
Can you put up some type of fencing to keep the kids out of it?
I can look into that.
That would be greatly appreciated, I think that is one of the fears.
Sure.
From what I've heard through the neighborhood.
Okay, yeah, I can do that.
And I imagine the city is looking at all liability issues as well with this project?
Well, liability is liability, the fact that we actually put a fence up actually exposes us to liability, but honestly, so we gotta work that out. Could be a construction fence, but they go over it, they go under it, as we saw with the home, the house that fell over into Main Street, you know, we put up barricades and people were just driving around and going around it anyway, so, you know, we can't put an eight-foot fence up, that'll be, you know, ten thousand dollars, that's gonna get torn down, but I'll look at it. I'll talk to Public Works about what we can do, and they may be starting, starting construction soon.
Was there anything you could treat the water with?
No.
You can introduce maybe a biological control, do you eat some of the algae and whatnot?
That's what the project is.
Yeah, but.
Right, so you're talking about a basin of about eighty, ninety acres just there, and that doesn't include the rest of Duffy Field where that feeds into, and I think the Duffy Field Canal collects water from about six hundred acres, okay? Much of that untreated, so when you say, do something.
Well, Duffy Field Canal is pulling everything off of the New Street Boulevard from the hospital back.
So there's nothing.
And it's also taking all of the lowlands in Duffy Field, so you're getting all sorts of road runoff and everything else, which is just noxious.
But after construction, that'll all change somewhat?
The sub-basin, the C C eight or sub-basin, will, that water will be collected and treated. It does, I, I mean, we have another project with the Duffy Field Canal that we're working on too, to really, it's essentially considered a channelized stream at this point in time to kind of return to its natural state, to allow more treatment of the water than it is. So we're, we're, we have a lot of grants out for that one also. And it's getting a lot of attention that we are.
To find a natural state of the Duffy Field Canal. Is it, does it have stuff growing in the middle of the canal like it does now? Is that considered natural state?
No, it's really getting rid of the hard edges, right? So at some point, and some places is five feet wide.
Right.
Right, so get rid of that, slopes, plantings, to catch runoff and treat runoff before it gets into the canal, slow down the flow.
Have you gotten all of the large appliances out of it?
I have not, no, we haven't, we haven't got there yet, but we will.
Are there any other?
It, it took a long time to get like that, yeah.
I know it's not gonna happen on day, but I've been fighting this since two thousand seventeen.
We have a lot of projects going to fix, address those issues, nothing can fix it.
So on the cleanup day of November fifth and sixth, what does that clean up?
Duffy Field.
Yeah, it's a trash.
Duffy Field Phoenix Project is heading to clean up.
Appliances and.
Yeah, it does, Duffy Field Phoenix Project is heading to clean up. We're working with the redevelopment commission, with Habitat, with the local churches, several other groups, and we will go through and literally pick up trash on the streets and on the right of ways. We will not go into yards unless we are invited. We are sending out a flyer ahead of time that will say, if you have large appliances or anything large you want to get rid of, let me know, and we will make arrangements to get it gone. We have a city truck going through on Friday picking up the refuse.
That's gotta make a big difference.
We've got the county road crew coming in on Friday to clean. We've got the county road crew coming in on Friday to clean up the railway track area, which they do every time, and they typically clean up around K Street as well because that's a good trash dump. And they may start doing a little bit more. But we've been doing this now for about three or four years, and Duffy Field is much cleaner. It used to take us 21 hours to clean it up over three days. Now it takes about eight hours over two days.
Wow, big difference.
So it's, it's made a huge difference. We still see construction debris coming in after midnight and being dumped rather than taken to the dump like it's supposed to be. And Duffy Field tends to function on a don't notice, don't tell. So fortunately, we're seeing less construction debris, but there's still drywall, two-by-fours, things like that. First time we did it, we pulled out on mattresses. The reason I was asking about all the stuff in the canal, the canal is just full of overgrowth and all sorts of, there was, there was a stove in the middle of it, in one spot.
Well, I remember we rode through it, you could see a lot of that. Can I just think up a new stack?
Yeah.
Are there any other questions that you'd like to ask of Land Development Services? I've heard none, at this point, I would like to entertain a motion to approve.
Certainly.
Seconded.
Seconded, seconded, role call, please.
Don Black?
Yay.
Matt Burden?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Amy Chou?
Yes.
Tony Dunn?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Pat Doherty?
Yes.
Sammy Louie Do?
Yes.
Motion passed, you're a governor.
You are, thank you.
And I would say, if anybody wants to join us on the 5th and 6th of November, come to the Large Picnic Shelter at Henderson Park. We'll give you a T-shirt, we'll give you bags, gloves, rathers, vests, send you out at nine o'clock, and then you come back to have lunch with us.
At Henderson Park?
Henderson Park.
Friday and Saturday?
Love to have any help we can get from the planning and zoning board. Jeff, you could come, Zach, you could.
I would be, yeah.